Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission on Thursday, April 24th, 2025. May we have our announcements, please?
Get ready, Scott.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure, and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the BZAs bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning, subdivision, or variance application, and his or her representatives to a total of 10 minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers, please be as courteous and concise as possible, and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the BZA is final. Any appeal of a decision of the BZA is to the district court.
Before we get going, my name's Bob Aldrich. I am acting chair. Why, our chair Brian Fry is absent. For those of you who have never been to a planning commission meeting, what we're going to do is we'll start out, of course, we did the opening announcements. We'll go through each item to see if anything might be taken by consent. We do have a BZA case, so we'll be getting involved in that. Staff will give their reports, and then we'll have an opportunity for the agent or applicant, and then the public will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Right now, I'd like to do the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Fry is absent. Mater?
Here.
McKay?
Here.
Duel?
Here.
Bill Johnson?
Here.
Mr. High is absent. Nix?
Here.
Clance is absent. Warren?
Here.
Joe Johnson?
He's here.
He's here, but he stepped out.
Okay.
And I'm here, too.
Miles, thank you. Zimbleman?
Here.
Aldrich?
Here.
William Spee? Sir, I show three members are absent and 11 members are present.
Thank you, Scott. Now, what we'll do is go through the agenda. Excuse me, for the next item we're going to have is the approval of the prior MAPC minutes for April 10th. Has everybody had an opportunity to look through that? And I do show that Commissioner Mater was absent.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Now, we're going to go through the consent items to see if there's anything we might be able to take on consent. The first items for consideration would be subdivision. The first item is subdivision 2025-0016. It's item 2.1, approximately 127 Street East and 131 Street North in the county. Does anybody on the commission like to hear this case? Anybody in the public like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll show that 2.1 on consent. The next item is 2.2, subdivision 2025-00019. It's a one-step final plant at approximately 137, 135th Street South in the city. Is anybody on the commission to hear this case? Is anybody from the public would like to speak regarding this case? Seeing none, we will take item 2.2 on consent. Is there a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve agenda items 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All supportive of the motion, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chair, I just want the record to show that Mr. Joe Johnson will be abstaining from this vote since he is not present for this vote.
So that would be a...
10-01.
The next item that we have is a vacation case, 3.12025-0010. That's located approximately East Sesna Street and South George Washington Boulevard. Is there anybody on the commission wish to hear this case? Anybody from the public wish to hear this case? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Oh, excuse me. Well, we'll take that one on consent. The next item is 3.2, also a vacation. That's approximately South Millwood Avenue, west of 47th Street South. Anybody on the commission like to hear that? Anybody in the public wish to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll also put 3.2 for approvals. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
Chairman, I move to approve agenda items 3.1 and 3.2.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent. And we have a second. All in favor, support by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item would be going into the public hearing case. 4.1 has been, the application has been withdrawn on that, so we will move to 4.2. That's approximately southwest corner of South Greenwich Road and East 87th Street South. Conditional use. Is anybody on the commission would like to hear this case? Seeing none, is anybody from the general public wish to hear this case?
51?
Yes, that's correct, 4.1.
Yep. And sir, we'll come back to this item, and there will be a time for public comment at that time. Thank you.
Okay, we will be hearing 4.2. The next item for consent would be 4.3, conditional use 2025-0025. It's a request for accessory apartments approximately South Clinton Avenue and East Central. Does anybody on the commission like to hear this case? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public that would like to hear this case?
Is there any way I can just make a, just indicate a statement of support from the neighborhood association?
Do noted. Thank you. Does anybody else like to make a comment? If not, we will put 4.3 on consent. Next item is 4.4, conditional use 2025-0053. Also, a accessory apartment located on East Waterman Street and South Route 10. Is there anyone from the commission like to hear this case? Seeing none, is anyone from the public wish to hear this case?
And again, I'd like to express neighborhood support for that. I'm sure she's got the paperwork filled out great. Although it hurt my feelings that she's turning a workshop into a...
Thank you for your support. We will put that on consent. Next item is 4.5 on the agenda, conditional use 2025-00056, conditional use for entertainment established in the city, approximately East 47th Street and hydraulic. Is there anyone on the commission that likes to hear this case? Seeing none, is there anybody in the general public would like to hear this case? We have two. We will be hearing 4.5. Next item on the agenda is 4.6, conditional use 2025-00057. That's a accessory apartment in the county, approximately Ross Avenue and 87th Street North. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to hear this case? Anyone in the general public would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we will put 4.6 on conditional. Or not a conditional, but a consent. I was close. 4.7 has been deferred to May 22nd, so we will not be hearing that. 4.8 is zoning 2025-0009. It's a request for change, a single-family, five to TF3, approximately Maple Street and south of All Hallows Avenue. Is there anyone on the commission would like to hear this case? Seeing none, is there anyone in the general public would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we will put 4.8 on consent. 4.9 is also a zone case, 2025-00010, request for TF3, two-family residential to be multifamily of apartments on North Volusia Avenue and also East Douglas. Is there anyone on the commission like to hear this case? Anyone on the general public like to hear this case? I think we're going to be hearing this case. And the last item on the public agenda is 4.9, zoning 2025-00011. That's a rural residential, single-family residential, and we're looking 167th Street, approximately West 21st Street. Is there anyone on the commission would like to hear this case? Seeing none, is there anyone in the general public like to hear this case? If not, we will take 4.10 on consent.
Mr. Chairman? It's Scott Wadeall. If I could, sir, I just wanted to make a quick note before you vote on the consent items, and that was that we do have a unique situation in that one of our cases, 4.4, the applicant is actually a staff member. So I just want to state for the record that in preparation and analysis of that case, that staff member was not involved in analyzing that case and providing, and putting together the recommendation from the planning department.
Thank you. That's so noted on the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve agenda items 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.8, and 4.10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All supportive, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe item 4.5 was going to move to consent.
My mistake. I dropped 4.5 from my motion.
And has the second been revised?
Yes.
Okay, we'll re-support the vote. All supportive, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, that includes the public hearing, and now what we're going to do, we're going to switch over recess from public hearing, and we're going to move over to the BZA agenda. We do have minutes from January 23rd. I show that Leon Mater, Bill Johnson, and Hugh Nix was absent. Do we have a...
Move for approval.
Second.
Can we have a motion in the second? All...
Mr. Question? I believe Mr. Blick was gone for that, if I'm reading the minutes right.
That is correct, but since he's no longer on here, it's not an abstention vote.
I understand. Thank you.
Can we have motion in the second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
Abstain.
It's an 8-0-3 vote.
Okay, I do have a question. Next item we have on the agenda, agenda item number two of the BZA, 2025-0025 in the city. That is located approximately North Roosevelt and East 13th. I do have a question for staff on this. If there's no opposition on this item from either the staff reports or from the applicant, there is, if you do want to hear it, okay, we're going to hear this case. Sorry, I missed all my question that I never asked. Okay. Okay. Do you just have a question?
No, I have a change I'd like to...
Okay, let's go ahead and hear the staff report on this, please.
Brad, since we found that all five conditions are met, we can do an abbreviated presentation.
Yes, thank you, Brad Etherly, Planning Department. We are here to discuss BZA 2025-00015. The applicant is requesting a variance to the Wichita Sign Code in order to increase square footage allowed for the building signs on property zone TF3. If approved, the building signs would be, building sides would be constructed on the east, west, and south elevations. The applicant is basically allowed 25 square feet gross on that side, but is asking for 48 square feet in size for a building sign on the east side of the building that is facing east as well, if that makes sense. And we can go through pictures to show exactly what we're dealing with. So, this is, the applicant is First T, and they state that First T is a nonprofit youth development organization that enables kids to build strength of character that empowers them through a lifetime of new challenges. They use golf to teach life skills, create active learning experiences that build inner strength, self-confidence, and resilience that kids can carry on to everything that they do. Many young people have access to First T at no cost, and they rely mainly on donations and grants for their operations. Having the name of the institution not only identifies the property for the young people, but also describes the building's use to those driving by and playing at McDonald Golf Course. And so, just a little bit of surrounding context as well. The signing question is, if we can go to the zoning map, or, yeah, so the sign-in question is going to be just kind of north of this little blue square where there's a cell tower. And they currently have, if we can go to site pictures... So this is where they're planning on putting, I think, actually, in this corner, the sign. You can see that they have a sign already on the south side of the building, and this is the south side. And then, next picture, this is looking north away. Next picture, this is looking east away. Next picture, this is looking at the cell towers of south away. Next picture, this is looking west away. Next picture, I may not have gotten the west elevation, but they also have a sign on that side of the building. The five criteria are considered to being met by staff, so we do recommend approval of the variance to increase from 25 square feet to 48 square feet with conditions that are listed in the staff report, and I can stand for any questions.
Do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none, agent or applicant? Ferris, you've got 10 minutes.
I will need that. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, my name's Greg Ferris. I live at 144 South Bay Country Court in Wichita. We concur with everything in the staff report except one thing that they said. They wanted the sign to be off at 10 o'clock, and this is the sign in question right here. These other two signs are allowed by right, and they may or may not be turned off at 10 o'clock. They don't have to be. What I would like is to waive the 10 o'clock. This sign can only be seen from McDonald Golf Course. The nearest residential property is probably half a mile or three away, so it won't impact anybody having this be the same as these two. So, we just like, everything in the staff report, we agree with. We'd just like you to remove the 10 o'clock requirement, because if it, if we were asking for an appeal on the west-facing, it would make sense, but it's allowed by right, and it's not, there's no issue with that. So, I can't imagine they're going to run it all night just because it costs money, and there's no need to, but there certainly isn't any reason to have these two signs on a different timer than this sign. So I would just ask that the Board of Zoning Appeals grant the variance subject to staff report, except that they remove the 10 o'clock. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Ferris, what time does the timers set now?
I don't know for sure what time those timers are set for. They probably are set two or three hours after dark, but I don't know that for a fact. I don't believe First T is here, and I should have asked that question, Bob, but I didn't. But again, it won't make any difference one way or another, because whatever, whatever those two signs are, they're allowed to be on all night if they want, because those are allowed by right in the zoning code.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, point of clarification. If the signs are within 200 feet of residential zoning and visible from residential zoning, the hours are limited. They cannot be on between 11:00, 2300, and 7:00 a.m.
And they would be, so that's fine. If you want to make it 11:00, we're fine with that, because that would then be in conformance with the other sign that faces, because it is within 200 feet of those houses across the street.
Okay, it sounds like staff is good with that. Is there any comments from the commission?
I'd make a motion to approve it based on the...
Mr. Chair, should we have public comment first?
Is there anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Hearing none, now we'll bring it back to the commission. So you want to make a motion to approve based on the fact that all five criteria has been met?
Yes, and with the right to have that sign lit until 11:00.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed with 11:01. That concludes the BZA. We will now go back to the public, or the public hearing portion, and the first item that we'll be hearing would be 4.2, and we are ready for staff.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Christina Reeve with Planning Staff. This is case number CON 2025-0051. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow a riding academy or stable on property-zoned rural residential. It's about 40 acres in size and located at 9163, 9217 South Greenwich. It's located within the City of Derby's zoning area of influence and subdivision authority. The subject site is currently developed with several outbuildings used for raising horses, which is considered an agricultural use. The applicant has indicated that they intend to use a property for horse riding lessons, which is a commercial use. In fact, the definition of riding academy or stable, according to the Unified Zoning Code, is a commercial establishment for boarding, breeding, training, or raising of horses, not owned by the owners or operators of the establishment, rental of horses for riding, or other equestrian activities. The applicant has indicated they would also like to do indoor and outdoor horse shows. So the applicant owns 110 acres, but 40 acres of the subject site will be, they are requesting for this conditional use. The remaining 70 acres will be used for agricultural purposes and a private residence. The site is developed with one barn built in 2022 and several smaller ancillary buildings. The horses will also have access to unpaved riding paths along the subject site. The Unified Zoning Code requires a parking study for riding academies or stables. As far as the conditions of approval, staff is recommending that the applicant submit a parking study. They have done that. I just have not been able to relay that to you guys, because we're still going back and forth a little bit. The character of the area is low-density residential. Properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned rural residential and developed with large lot, single-family dwellings. The subject, the subject property is not platted. Should the applicant construct a new building for the for commercial purposes, they will be required to plat this property. The site has access to South Greenwich Road, which is a paved, two-lane county arterial street with open ditches on both sides, and the property uses onsite sewage and is served by Rural Water District Number Three for Central County. The requested zone change is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. It identifies the site as a small-city urban growth area. Because this is within the Derby area of influence, we analyzed the conditional use request under Derby's Future Land Use Map. It's deemed appropriate for rural residential uses under the Derby Core Future Land Use Map. Staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the following conditions that are listed in your staff report, and this recommendation is based on the Golden Rules. This went to the City of Derby's Planning Commission just last week, and they recommended approval, but they have slightly different conditions. So condition number four, they modified to say that all equestrian-related events and shows are limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to midnight, and they added an extra condition saying that lights shall be shining towards a property and away from the residential areas. And this was after a comment from the public, a member of the public came to provide comment about the requested conditional use. So, let's go ahead to some of the site photos here, please. This is looking east towards the barn that was constructed in 2022. Next slide, please. This is looking east towards the entrance, so past the gates there is South Greenwich Road. Next slide, please. This is looking east towards the site. This is just one of the areas for the horses. Next slide, please. This is looking east towards the site, towards one of the riding tracks. Next slide, please. This is looking north away from the site, so this is the northern property line that we... So this is the northern property line that we see here. Next slide, please. This is looking north towards that same barn. And this is the corral portion of the site. Next slide, please. This is looking north towards another riding track. Next slide, please. Looking north towards one of the areas for the horses. Next slide, please. This is looking south towards the same barn. Next slide, please. Looking south towards one of the riding tracks. Next slide, please. This is looking southeast towards a horse. I had a lot of fun taking pictures. Next slide, please. This is looking west away from the barn. Next slide, please. Looking west towards the same barn. Next slide, please. And this is looking west towards a riding path. This is way south of the riding tracks that we saw before. Next slide, please. This is looking west towards another riding track. Next slide, please. And that concludes my site photos. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Christina, thank you. Is there any questions for Christina? Commissioner Warren?
Christina, I know the conditions, number three. Says any events or shows are limited to those that are equestrian related. Where did that come from? I guess my, my question is this. There are a lot of properties out in the county that are, that they would use, there could be committee, community events that aren't charged. There'd be free events, or there could be large family events. Would that preclude them from doing that?
This is just a safety measure to prevent any other events from occurring onsite that are not equestrian related. Did you want to add anything to that, Scott?
Yeah, I think this, this came up when staff were kind of deliberating this case. And we were looking at it, trying to prevent large scale events from happening there, similar to like an event center.
Yeah, and I might add that a family event that's truly family would not be covered by this. It's, it's family, it's family gathering.
But if you wanted to invite the, say, the Derby Chamber of Commerce wanted to do, do a fundraising event, they couldn't do that?
I would, I would say if it's not equestrian related, no.
So I needed to know, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any, any additional questions? Saying none, agent or applicant, please. Mr. Ferris, you have 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Greg Ferris. I reside at 144 South Bay Country Court in Wichita. I'm not going to spend a lot of time because we completely concur with staff. With the exception of the changes that Derby made, we agree with those. I will correct one thing, Christina. I believe that the hours that Derby approved were till midnight on Friday and Saturday night, not all the time. So we're okay with, and that's what we requested, is only on Friday and Saturday night. Probably a very rare, we only do about six events a year. And Mr. Warren, we really don't do anything there. It's not, I don't know if you've been inside there. It's really not set up for those types of events, dirt floor. And it really is only for equestrian type events. I don't suspect that it would ever be set up for something where we would, you know, unless we were doing a fundraiser that involved horses or those kinds of things, it would make sense. Then it would be able to do those because they'd be equestrian related.
If you're happy with that, well.
We have no problem with any of the conditions. We also offered the, there was a spokesperson to the north from the, from the area that said there were some lighting issues. We agreed to shield those lights and make sure, as part of Derby's recommendation, we concur with those. We have no issue doing any of that. So all of the recommendations, we're fine with, with the changes that Derby made. And make sure that those changes include only on Friday, Saturday for the extra two hours. Be glad to answer any questions. I go through a long presentation, but we concur with staff and you have the report.
Any additional questions for the agent? Saying none, thank you, sir. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Sir, please come to the podium and state your name, your address. You have three minutes, sir.
Won't take that long. My name's Reiner Massey, 9101 South Greenwich Road. We leave two properties to the north of this. So you can actually see our riding arena right above there at the top of the picture. Anyway, we have no issue with the proposal. We did have what we were, and some of our neighbors also had the same issue with the lighting when it was first installed. And we want to make sure that the light isn't shining out, but stays on the property. So that was our main concern. And yes, and we even concurd, it was okay with the Friday, Saturday night for the 12 o'clock. So we're happy with this. We just want to make sure that lighting is controlled.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions? Seeing none, is there anyone else that'd like to, would speak on this item? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Thank you. Thank you. Saying none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, subject to staff comments. Point of clarification. Greg, you, you, you said that you agree with everything, except what the Derby people did.
We, we are in concurrence with the Derby recommendations, which are exactly the same as the county, I mean, as the cities, except, or the planning departments, except that the hours would be changed and to, on Friday and Saturday night to midnight. And an added requirement that the lighting would be shielded. So that glare would not leave the property of the lighting, or however the light standards are in the code, we would comply with those, however that is. So those are the two items.
Just Scott. To check, second, Mr. Dool, you concur with that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for approval in second with the stated changes. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have 11, 11:00. Thank you. Next item that we'll be hearing is item number 4.5, conditional use. Christina, you're, you're ready.
Hi, Christina Reith again with Planning Staff. For CON 2025-0056, this applicant is requesting a conditional use to permit an entertainment establishment, a property zoned limited commercial. And a very, very small portion of this site is actually zoned, single family residential. It's a little bit under three acres in size, located at 1827 East 47th Street South, just 250 feet east of South Hydraulic Avenue. The property is developed with a vacant building constructed in 1995 that was previously used as a bingo hall. The applicant is requesting the conditional use to permit both live entertainment and alcohol with an occupancy of less than 300 people. Section 3D 6W of the Unified Zoning Code requires conditional use for entertainment establishment where the site is within 300 feet of residential zoning or a public park. So this conditional use is due to the proximity of SF5 zoning, as well as a requested land use. Single family is immediately east of the subject site. So if we take a look at the zoning map here, everything that you see in red is zoned limited commercial. If you look at the top corner here, that's where we're seeing a very small portion used as SF5. However, this is green space. This isn't being used as part of the building. And then everything you see in white here is also single family. Section 3D 6W, it also outlines supplementary use regulations that the applicant should comply with, should the conditional use request be approved. And these pertain to noise compatibility standards, outdoor lighting requirements, and screening requirements. Due to the proximity of residences, staff is recommending prohibiting outdoor entertainment onsite, limiting the hours of operation, and requiring the parking lot to be free of trash and loitering. Those conditions of approval are located near the end of your staff report. Because the applicant abuts residential zoning and is located on a major street, they have to meet the requirements of the Wichita Landscape Code. As of April 2025, the City of Wichita is in a stage two drought. And applicants are not required to install said landscaping until the drought restrictions have been lifted. However, they will still be required to submit a landscape plan prior to the issuance of building permits. In addition to landscaping, the Unified Zoning Code requires applicants to screen commercial properties where abutting residential zoning. So that would be a six to eight foot solid fence near the northeast corner of the property. So there aren't exactly parking requirements for entertainment establishment in the city. But the closest one is nightclub in the city, which is live entertainment and alcohol for more than 300 people. And that is one parking space per two occupants. So the site already has a paved parking lot with 160 parking spaces. However, because they are requesting entertainment establishment in the city, this limits the establishment to 299 occupants. The site is also subject to compatibility noise standards. No sound amplification system for projecting music or human voices shall be permitted on any property zoned neighborhood, office district, or more intensive. If the music and or voices can be heard within a resident, or within any residential zoning district that is located within 500 feet of the subject site. There are no zoning cases associated with this property. The proposed application is in conformance with the Community Investments Plan. The Wichita Future Growth Concept Map identifies the site as primarily appropriate for new employment uses. The plan suggests that this area can support uses as intense as the requested entertainment establishment in the city. The plan's locational guidelines provide a decision making framework regarding land use changes. And one of the suggested development patterns states a development should occur where necessary, supporting infrastructure and services exist, where a plan for extension concurrently with the development. So the site is developed with a, with a building previously used for similar events with ample parking. The design of the existing site also follows the guidelines of the plan in that ingress and egress locations to non residential uses generally should not access residential streets. This is only going to be accessed from East 47th Street South. There is no access from the street to the south of that, which is a residential street. One of the land use compatibility guidelines of the plan states industrial and major commercial land uses that generate pollution, odor, noise, light, safety hazards, and high levels of traffic should be located away from residential areas and develop a screening, buffering, and site design features to mitigate these adverse impacts. So they are required to adhere to lighting standards as part of the conditions of approval. And they have screening and landscaping requirements. Lastly, the conditional use is in conformance with the South Wichita Hayesville Area Plan. They have their own future development concept map that identifies the site as appropriate for commercial uses. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use with the, the conditions listed in your staff report. And this recommendation is based on the golden rules. I will skip ahead to number eight here. I did receive a phone call from a gentleman who just wanted to know more about what was happening onsite. Not sure if he's going to be able to speak, or if he's here present to speak on this application so he can elaborate on this further. But that has since changed since the report was published. So let's go ahead to some of the site photos. This is looking east towards the site. This is the side of the building, showing that it used to be a bingo hall. Next slide, please. This is looking south towards the site. This is the main entrance. Next slide, please. This is looking west towards the site, just another side of the building. Next slide, please. This is looking north towards the site, towards the rear entrance. Next slide, please. This is looking north away from the site, across East 47th Street South. Next slide, please. This is looking northeast away from the site. This is the parking lot, and these are some of the residences that you can see from there. Next slide, please. This is looking east away from the site. Again, this was taken from the parking lot. Next slide, please. This is looking southeast away from the site, again, towards some of the residences, a portion of which are zoned, both limited commercial and single family. Next slide, please. This is looking south away from the site. Next slide, please. Looking southwest away from the site. Next slide, please. And this is looking west away from the site. This is across South Hydraulic Avenue. Next slide, please. That concludes my site photos. And with that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Christina, thank you. Is there any questions for Christina? Okay, seeing none, the agent or the applicant, please? I'm sorry, sir, you'll have your time. We're not quite ready for public. You'll have, you'll have a moment.
You don't, you don't have anything to add? Okay. The applicant has nothing to add.
Okay, at this time, then, we'll open it up to the general public. Anybody who'd like to speak from the public? If so, please go to the podium. Please state your name and your address. And you have three minutes.
I'm Gary Moore, live 1817 East 48th Street South. And I'm on the, I guess it'd be the south side of where the bingo parlor is. So we got a pretty good eye view of it. And I was wondering along the back fence, and all along there, it's all chain link fence. Are they going to put up a different kind of fence there? Or is it going to stay the same? Because they got all kinds of elm trees growing in there. It's just really nasty looking. And also, I really, really don't want no alcohol. There is, our house is in there. There is trailer courts across the street from that area that's really close. A lot of kids in there, bus stop goes in there. But I do appreciate it if they don't. I don't know what the hours are going to be. That's another thing. And I just don't want a bunch of alcoholics running around. We got enough problem with people running around that are homeless and all that kind of stuff. And this is just going to add to it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the commission have any questions? If not, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address. And you have three minutes, sir.
My name's Steve Raj. 4842 South Minneapolis, Wichita, Kansas. This says it's an entertainment establishment. That seems pretty wide open to me. And they're, they're talking about liquor and live music. We don't know if this is going to be something that they read out to other people? Or is this, oh, and when I called, they said something about food, too. So is it a restaurant? Is it a drinking establishment? Or, you know, to me, it's not clear what it is. I mean, what limitations do they have? Other than, and the only other thing I did find out was they were going to have to close at midnight on, I believe it's Friday and Saturday nights. And then 10 o'clock the rest of the week. You know, it just seems pretty vague as to, you know, exactly what is this thing? And they're not even here to, you ask them if they wanted to come up, and they're not even here to explain what they're going to do? See, we ran into another deal on the other side of the street. They tried to rezone that. And they told us it was going to be a place for storage. People like, sounded like they were going to store like motorhomes, boats, and things like that. And then come to find out, when it got down to it, it was something, they were going to have short term rentals, you know, kind of like transient people there. And the people in the neighborhood, you know, you know, what they said they were going to do didn't end up being what they did. And I don't want to see that happen again. And evidently, they don't want to even come up here and tell us what, what they are going to do. So I think that needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Is there any questions? Yes, Commissioner McKay?
I don't have a question, Speaker. I'd like to have the applicant come to the podium so we might be able to answer some of the questions that's been asked.
Mr. Chair, do we want to finish public comment first or before the rebuttal?
Before, hang on just one second. Is there anyone else from the public would like to speak on this? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium. You have. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address for our record, please. And then we'll, after that, we'll come back to you, John.
My name's Viola Moore. My address is 1817 East 48th Street South.
Thank you.
I'm kind of short. My concern is our property values. Are they going to go down? You know, we live in an area that is not, you know, we think it's nice, but as far as the improvements that's coming around in that area is very limited. My house will be backed up to the fence. I have a clear view all the way to the building. I don't feel that that is an appropriate business for that area. Like we said before, we've got homeless already over there that is camping out, and I feel that this is just going to pull our, the value of our properties even further down. We have some nice homes there. Yes, there's some that's not as nice, but we take pride in our area. And I would like to see something brought in there that is going to lift our area up instead of pulling it back down. Thank you.
And thank you. Yes, Commissioner Miles?
Can you point on the map to where your house is, if it's on the map?
Ma'am, can you use the pointer? Yeah, this has been recorded.
See, I'm not technical. I am right here. Thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this?
Well, yeah, my grandkids live right here. So I have grandkids here, and our neighbors is on around, right around in this area.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner, did you have a question?
We get a full view and the noise of all the area. Down? They're trying to tell me which way to go.
Okay.
Down, down, down? Left?
Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, see if these guys would have done this for me.
Okay, ma'am, I believe we might, ma'am. Excuse me, I think we might have a question from one of the commissioners.
Yes, the subject of homeless has come up twice. Where exactly is your homeless problem? Is it close to this facility that we're talking about?
Where would what now?
The homeless issue you were discussing.
Across the street. There's an empty field here that this whole line here of trees have been unkept and litter, and the homeless have camped underneath this tree here. We also get a lot of the homeless over at QuickTrip standing around. We have them at the corner. We have them walking up and down 47th Street, which, you know, it's okay for them to walk, but, you know, all that is starting to come more our way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, the agent or the applicant, please? You have two minutes for rebuttal.
I'm Andrea Acosta, 2331 South Ellis, and I am here on behalf of me and my parents who own the building. So what we are wanting to do is a venue. So I know it says like, kind of like a event establishment, kind of unsure. That's kind of what they told me about. So it would be a venue. So mainly used Friday, Saturday, and Sunday till midnight, not a restaurant, not a club, none of that. Will there be music? Yes, people are okay to take their own music to the events. I know you had a question over the fence. I'm not sure about that. That would be something I'd have to ask more in depth about. Other than that, it's more so a venue just on the weekends. You know, I doubt anybody want a party on a Wednesday or Tuesday, but if they do, you know, we are open to it. That's kind of all I have.
Commissioner Miles?
Can you tell me what steps that you all will take to try to reduce the noise that bleeds over to the residences? That's always a concern of mine because, you know, I have a neighbor that lives a block down the street, and he cranks up the music in his garage until midnight, and my kids can't sleep.
I'm not sure what steps need to be taken in order for it not to sound all the way out loud. I know it's a pretty big building, and we are, what is it, short under three acres, so I'm not quite sure what steps need to be taken. We could look into those options. I don't think this would be a 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 AM thing. Maybe like midnight where things would stop.
Okay, Commissioner McKay, did you have any questions?
Do you agree with what staff is commenting in the presentation?
What steps?
There's a presentation that was made here.
Oh, yes, 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 I heard those.
Do you agree with the staff comments?
Commissioners, a moment, did you have any questions?
It was basically, okay. Be any...
It was going to be close to what he asked, but there's, it's pretty specific in the report about the screening and the fencing. So have you read that, and are you in agreement with all that?
I will. Like I said, I'm here on behalf of my parents, so my parents do the work. I will let them know about that. Yes, they are aware.
Okay, well, if we approve this, then you're agreeing you're going to do this, so I just want to make that clear to you.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll bring him back to the commission.
Moved to approve subject to staff comments and recommendations.
We have a motion for approval in a second. Any additional comments? All supportive, please signify with say nay. All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion passed 10 to 1. Our next item that we'll be hearing would be item 4.9 on the agenda, zoning case 2025 And Philip, this is yours.
Yes, sir. Philip Zievenbergen, for the record. Zone 2510 is a zone change request in the city from TF32 family residential to B multifamily residential. Property is located on the west side of North Volusia, located at 117 North Volusia. As you can see, this is just north of East Douglas Avenue. The applicant intends to take the existing house and convert it into five apartments. If you want to go to that floor plan, that shows how those would be divided. Here you can see that the main floor here would be divided into three units. The applicant would intend to install an exterior staircase on the south side of the building in order to access two units on the second floor as well. The B district would allow for single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential up to 75.1 dwelling units an acre. The proposed five units within the existing home is less than the maximum of 13 dwelling units per acre. Keep in mind, when it comes to density calculations, they also have to provide the same amount of, the appropriate amount of parking. And so even though at some point redevelopment could happen, you're likely not to get 13 dwelling units on the site just based on its size. You likely would not be able to park for 13 dwelling units. Given what the site plan shows, if you want to go to that, they are accommodating the seven required parking spaces on site, and it looks like they do have the opportunity for a couple extra, but that essentially becomes the maximum, just based on the space that's available within the property lines of this property. Other development standards would change to the B district regarding setbacks and things of that nature and height requirements. Though the maximum height could increase to 55 feet, compatibility standards limit the height to 35 feet because it is within 50 feet of TF3 or SF5 zoning, and so even though the B standard could allow for 55 based on the proximity of more or less or more restrictive zoning to the north, it is restricted to 35 feet, which is what is the height limit in TF3 as it is now. Regarding compatibility setbacks, the current structure, the site would be required to have a 15-foot setback for any new structures that are there. The current house is not 15 feet from the north property line, whereabouts residential zoning. Essentially, the house would become nonconforming. Any new structures would have to comply with the 15-foot compatibility setback from the north property line. If the structure were to ever be removed and want to be replaced, then a compatibility setback would be in place at that time, but the existing house would then become nonconforming. Regarding screening and landscaping, going to be multifamily zoning with TF3 to the north requires the property to be screened on the north side as well as the property to the west of them, fronting north Estelle is also TF3 that also requires a screening fence. At your desk, you have a revised site plan that we received prior to the formation of the presentation that essentially illustrates that they would provide a screening fence on that north side and the west side in order to comply with the screening requirements. Landscaping is also required, which requires buffer trees along that north and west property lines as well, as well as some landscaping along Volusia. Landscape plan is revered during the time of building permits, so any type of permit they have to build, pull. To do the renovation on the inside, landscaping would be determined at that time. In short, it required shade trees along the north, calculated one per 40 linear feet, in addition to some landscaping along Volusia because it is on a residential street, and there's some residential zoning across the street from it. Parking requirements, as I mentioned before, they do show that they meet these seven required parking spaces for these five single-bedroom apartment units. That parking ratio is 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit. Again, they show that two additional parking spaces could be added. Any additional parking is at their own consent. They can always provide more parking, but they do meet the minimum parking requirement. You go to the aerial image, please. One thing I want to mention is we've received several comments regarding this, regarding a existing situation regarding parking on Volusia. One thing I want to note here, the applicant owns this apartment building, the house that's in question, the building that faces north Estelle, and I believe this structure as well facing East Douglas. Though it is all under common ownership, every single one of those properties are separate tax parcels. They could be bought and sold independently at any time. When I conducted the site visit, and you'll see this in the site picture, essentially the rear yards of the Estelle property and the subject Volusia property is one common paved area. There's signs for Bel Air parking only. It's essentially assumed, and I'll say assumed, that it's essentially a common parking area for all the properties that the applicant owns. With these two properties being zoned residentially now and even going to be multifamily if it's approved, the applicant is actually not allowed to use this paved area for parking for off-site uses. So essentially, people in this apartment complex technically aren't allowed to use this parking area even though it's under the same ownership because ancillary parking for these properties, it requires a conditional use. That being said, the conversation we're having today is a zone change within these property lines, and this area shows that they can provide the seven parking spaces for this house. If the applicant wants to use the additional parking area for other properties that they own, they can come back to the planning commission and request the required conditional use for ancillary parking. That's not under conversation today. Other comments that I heard from the public were a parking situation along North Volusia where there's a significant amount of on-street parking on both sides, likely from the apartment building facing East Douglas. As you can see, this apartment building is essentially built lot line to lot line. It was constructed in 1900 and constructed under different zoning and development standards than we have today. It is a nonconforming structure, and given the fact that this area was built out approximately all at the same time, you can see that no off-street parking requirement was required for this apartment building. No action about the zoning case we have today has any jurisdiction over how this property functions. This is a nonconforming structure. It is essentially grandfathered in in its current state, and so any parking issues related to this property here with the apartments is not under conversation today, even though it's under the same ownership as the applicant. We are only under, talking about a zone change for this property and whether or not this property can provide the off-street parking that it is required to, and their site plan shows that they do. The surrounding context is a mixture of multifamily and single-family and commercial uses. If you go to the zoning map, please. Properties along Douglas are zone limited commercial. The majority of them on this block are with multifamily uses. You've got two-family to the north, two-family across the street, mostly developed with single-family homes. The property has access to North Volusia, which is a paved two-way local street with sidewalks on both sides. All municipal services serve the site. Go back to the aerial again, I apologize. You can see that there's a platted alley, so the rear of the property is access from the platted alley, which actually provides very good access to that area in terms of getting to these parking areas. So you have a full, improved alley that goes between Volusia and Estelle, providing access to the rear in order to accommodate that parking. Regarding conformance to the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan identifies it as appropriate for residential uses. This encompasses all densities of residential uses. Given the character of the area with higher density uses along East Douglas, not to mention it's zone limited commercial, which means any one of these properties could be to rebuild, redevelop with higher intensity uses, going to be multifamily actually provides the step-down zoning when it comes to buffering low-intensity uses from higher-intensity uses along the arterial street. So staff finds that it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Regarding Places for People Plan, it conforms to strategy number five, which provides a diversity of housing options to attract new residents and allow existing residents to continue to live in the established central area. Small-scale development would provide housing options that otherwise might not be available in the immediate area. The requested zone change also provide, conforms to strategy number six, which encourages infill redevelopment that is contextual to the environment. The proposed zoning would permit multifamily development, which is contextual, given the larger multifamily development that's immediately to the south along East Douglas. Staff is recommending, oh, I'm sorry, there's a Central Northeast Area Plan update. It does not necessarily have a future land use map like other neighborhood plans do. However, a top issue that's identified in this is rehabilitating and repairing existing housing stock, and revitalizing of the area should focus on rehabilitation, not demolition of existing homes. So the fact that they want to convert the existing home and retain the character of the structure conforms to this plan as opposed to demolishing it for some other type of use or other type of building. Overall, staff is recommending approval subject to a protective overlay. This is protective overlay 452, and our proposed protective overlay says that any dwelling structure shall be built with compatible architecture with the existing dwellings in the area and shall have a hipper gabled roof. As I said, they plan to repurpose the existing house, and so they're planning to retain the character of the structure, but should it ever be redeveloped, this essentially provides that it would have to have some similar character to the existing neighborhood that surrounds it. The applicant should provide a revised site plan detailing placement of building, location, required parking spaces, and required screening and landscaping. They have provided a revised site plan that identifies as screening. Again, any landscape plan is submitted with any type of construction drawings during the permitting process. And the final condition of the protective overlay, parking is prohibited from being located on the east half of the property unless a building on site is located between the parking area and adjacent property to the north. Essentially, keeping the parking in the back. If it were to have to be to redevelop and a new structure to be built, we don't want the parking along Volusia, especially since it has access from the alley. This condition essentially keeps it functioning the way the property is now with a building on the east and north area and the parking away from the residential area and the parking not along the street. The staff recommendation is based on the findings that are listed in your staff report. Again, we have heard from several folks, and they are here this afternoon, and so I will let them share their comments with you. I can go through the staff, through the pictures, if you want to go to the site pictures, please. This is looking west towards the house. This is the house in question that they look to convert. You can see here the alley that provides access to the rear of the property. These are the apartments that face East Douglas and a TF3 zone, single-family home to the north. Next picture. This is looking to the northwest, again, the neighboring property to the north and several houses as a property goes north or as the street goes north. Next picture. This is an angle to the south, looking at the rear of the apartments that face East Douglas. Next picture. This is looking across the street on the east side of Volusia. These are the houses that are across the street. Those are all zone TF3, but as you can see, they're single-family homes. There's a platted alley here, and then... There's a platted alley here, and then there's kind of a mixture of commercial. I think that's the next picture, commercial and residential there. There's residential on the back and I think commercial along East Douglas. Next picture. This is in the rear of the property. Here's that platted alley. This is the parking area associated with this building. This is within the property lines of the proposed apartment. And you can see there's signs up indicating that the parking is already being used, likely more than what a single-family home would be. That's where the conversation came up of needing to require ancillary parking for any additional shared parking with multiple properties that are off-site. Next picture. This is again the rear of the property. This is the house. This is looking towards the alley, again, the same parking area that would be utilized for these five apartments in the house if it's approved. Next picture. This is looking to the south. I believe this property is also owned by the applicant. This is the alley headed to the west towards Estelle. Next picture. And with that, I can say for your questions from the commission.
Philip, you mentioned that there was a parking issue on Volusia, and it's got nothing to do with the zone change request on there. But is that something that traffic engineering possibly could look at and maybe address some of the issues?
Yes, in a conversation with gentle, one gentleman neighbor this week, I did provide his contact information, or traffic engineering's contact information. It sounds like they have reached out to them. I've also had a conversation with traffic engineering about this. But yes, that is in the realm of traffic engineering regarding signage. If signage does go up and the parking arrangement changes on Volusia, it's a matter of enforcement through Wichita PD, whether or not parking signs are being followed, but that would go through traffic engineering.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any questions, Commissioner Wisbe?
Yes, Philip, it appears from the floor plan that from the exterior, you'd never know that this was a, becoming an apartment complex, right?
They would convert the house to five apartments.
But from the exterior, it still appear as a single.
As far as I know, there aren't, other than adding a staircase on the south side, which is along the alley, that the exterior would likely not be changed much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Zillman?
Philip, maybe I missed this, but we were given a revised site plan when we got here. Is this taking over for the one you have?
Yes, we received it earlier this week, and really the only change on it is identifying that a screening fence would be installed on the north and west property lines.
So the staff is in agreement?
It meets the screening requirement as identified in the staff report.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Saying none, agent or applicant? Ferris, you have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address for our records, please.
As chairman members of the planning commission, my name is Greg Ferris. I reside at 144 South Bay Country Court in Wichita, Kansas. So could we go back to the aerial that was just up before this? The owner of this property would like to develop this as a multifamily structure. It will retain its existing look as a single-family home, except for you will be able to see the, basically the entry-exit staircase on the south side of the road. Other than that, the actual visual image will be the same. I think that we completely concur with staff, the recommendations. We have no issue with anything in the staff report. There's a couple of things I would like to point out, and we are willing, and you could add one condition, and we're very much willing. There is adequate parking for this structure with the new apartments. Staff's made that clear. We actually exceed or can exceed the requirements. So I think that that's important. If you would like us to sign this such that it is parking only for 117 North Volusia, we're happy to do that. We'll have no issue with that whatsoever. And that way, we'll assure that what we're doing here adds absolutely zero parking issue to the neighborhood. I understand the neighbors' concern in the parking along Volusia, but that really has nothing to do with our case, as our case strictly is this piece, and we have adequate parking for this. So we believe that with all this parking that's in the back, and you saw photos of that, that we're okay. Something else I'd point out, that this isn't just LC to B to TF3. You also have office zoning on this same block. So what we're introducing into this area is nothing that is really a major change in the development of this area. With the multifamily and commercial along Douglas, this does provide, as staff pointed out, a appropriate buffer to that limited commercial zoning or the higher-density multifamily zoning. So with what we're doing, leaving the structure the same, adequate parking, new landscaping, we believe that this not only is a positive, it's an addition for the area. One of the things that is been discussed many times over is affordable housing. To add these four units as a one-bedroom in an affordable way will also enhance the, excuse me, allergies are getting bad, will add to the area. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner McKay?
Greg, you're applying for B multifamily.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you go to MF18?
Staff recommended B because of the size of the lot.
I'll, I'll add to that.
Okay.
To get five units on the size of the lot, you needed the density of B multifamily to achieve it. Initially, when we had discussed this with the agent at a pre-application meeting, they were looking at MF29, and MF29 didn't get five dwelling units either. So to achieve five dwelling units on the size of the lot, you needed the B multifamily zoning.
The reason I asked the question, because B multifamily is a lot denser zoning than MF29 or 18. That's why I was asking.
Yes, understood. And staff's perspective is it's a very small lot, and so given the small scale of the lot, B can be appropriate.
And with the B, the really, in reality, there's nothing, we can't do any more than five. There's no way you can do more than five units here unless you tore that building down and built a new building, in which case you'd have to meet setbacks, and you'd still really be limited in that regard. So there is no desire to do that. And if you want to limit it to five as part of the protective overlay, I don't have any problem with that either, Commissioner.
No, I was just asking because of the fact that of the density situation.
Understand.
Plus, the owner owns most all the land around it, which, with that type of zoning and commercial, could get pretty deep.
Are there any additional questions from the commission? Saying none, we'll open this up to the, for the public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Yes, please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Elisa DePontier, and I live at 142 North Volusia. I've lived there for 36 years now. In listening to everything, I really appreciate the protective overlay and the fact that it would be cohesive to our neighborhood. And I am flabbergasted at how you got photos without all the traffic that we have lived with for so many years. It, it is untypical of what we navigate every day. So anyway, I have a few questions to ask the M A P C.
Ma'am, could you pull the microphone down just a little bit more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few questions to ask the M A P C and a few comments of my own. Number one, will you please provide the addresses of the properties that are in the 200-foot radius? And an example of why I'm trying to clarify it is, is like, the circle grazes 115 North Erie and includes a little bit of 121 North Erie. Are those included in the circle? And that's my.
Ma'am, could you show us your residence on the map by using the pointer?
Oh, I am legally blind, and I'm not sure I can.
Is there somebody that might be able to assist her?
Will you show where my, okay. I'm 142.
She's gonna be on the other side of the street.
Like here?
That's my yard, right there.
This one?
Yeah, that's my yard.
That's where she lives.
Okay, then thank you for your assistance.
And my second question is, is what transit service are you referring to that will, in your eyes, offset the need for cars and where to park them? The queue line stops on Douglas and Volusia, and it has a limited run schedule and only serves a small area of Wichita that I'm aware of. And number three, taking steps to block parking on the corner of Douglas and Volusia does not solve the dangerous on-street parking problem. It just pushes the problem 30 feet to the north. And just a side comment, we have a lot of cars on, on our street. I live, you can see where I live. Friday night, the neighbors to the north frequently, several nights a week, have a gathering, and they happened to call DoorDash about 9:30, 10 o'clock that night. And there was no place for DoorDash to park anywhere near that area. So they didn't know what to do, so they pulled in my driveway and pulled way up. And I thought, who's visiting me at this late at night? And so I stepped out on the porch and they hopped out and said, we have a delivery. We're DoorDash, we need to deliver to the house next door, but.
I'm sorry, your time has ran out. I do have a quick question for you. Did you receive any notification? Okay, I think you probably are just outside that area.
But I, okay.
Okay, I gotta.
Ma'am, I will, I've got your email. You and I have corresponded back and forth. I will send you that ownership list of all the addresses within that. I will send you the 200-foot list.
I appreciate that very much.
Philip, am I correct, is she outside the notification?
I would have to look at it, but again, her and I have been in conversations. As soon as she was outside of it, she's been notified either by the sign or by neighbors, so, yep. But I'll get her what she's asking for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Has everybody had any questions for the speaker? Saying none, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this? Yes, please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address. And we've already covered the traffic issue on Volusia. So if there's anything else you can add to this, we would appreciate it.
My name is Charlie Nurseassian. I live at 142 North Volusia, which is right next door to this place. I moved into this, excuse me, in the, I think you have the number. I, I moved into this, my house, in April of '22. And that house was occupied when we moved in, and it was occupied until December, of which during that time that we've lived there, there was a girl that OD'd inside that house. There was drugs going in and out of there, all through the time that the previous renters were there. The lady that lived in the house passed away in the house. This, this whole thing with this house is just, it, it's a big mess. I do have some pictures I'd like to bring up.
Do we have any pictures?
Yes, looks like staff is bringing up the presentation.
This picture here is on their property behind 117 that I took back in September of 2022. What you see on the ground is oil from a transformer from the power line. That was on Labor Day. I called the power company, and they came that day and actually replaced that transformer. And they said, you don't know how much you saved the people that were parked in the parking lot and the Bel Air apartments for damage, because it was, they said, they told me it was getting ready to explode. Next picture. Oh, that box that you see there, well, you can see the oil on the, on the ground here. Next picture, please. That's today, even though I took this picture a few days ago, that thing still hasn't been fixed, that box. And, and what I'm trying to show you here is the credibility of the way this guy takes care of their property. Next picture.
So you have 30 seconds left.
Pardon?
You have 30 seconds left.
This garbage can is always over full. In the summer, we get flies, terrible. I just called nuisance control. They're going out there to deal with it. Next picture. This is on the side of the apartments. It's been like that ever since I moved into my apartment complex. That's the gutter coming down from the, from the, up above. Next picture. That's, that's the truck. Next picture. Next, that's a car coming onto Volusia. That's what we have to deal with on a daily basis. Next picture. That's another car parked on Volusia. I came head-to-head with a police officer one day because there was cars parked on both sides of the car where this guy is parked, and I almost hit him. I had to back up to my driveway to let him in because he had cars coming up behind him, and he almost got hit. Next picture.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is expired.
I think I have a couple more minutes here. You, you had your thing, your.
I will, I will give you 30 more seconds, please.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to mention that these pictures were shared with staff, and they were included in the email that we sent to all guys earlier this week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have to tell you, I truly oppose, oppose this thing that they're doing. The house that they've got there, they could have taken care of it and rented it by now. It's, it's only because of them that it hasn't been rented. And he's claiming that he's losing money, and it's just sitting there. And by the way, it sounds like they're already starting to build whatever they're doing inside the house.
Sir, thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this? Is there anybody else from the public? Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you. Please state your name and your address, please.
I'm Kathy Nurseassian. I also live at 119 North Volusia. I want to talk a little bit, traffic is horrible, you know it. I'll skip that. It's going to affect property values when you put in more apartment complexes, especially if it's low-income or seniors. The factors is if it's poorly managed apartment complex, it leads to more noise, traffic, perception of decreased safety, and negatively affects nearby property values. Let's see. Potential buyers might be less interested in our homes. We have listed the conditions of the home being poorly maintained. Our expectations of the result of the proposed building improvements are low. We know what it looks like now. We know what he hasn't touched. We live here, the past performance is usually a good indicator of future behavior, and what's on paper and what's reality are two very different things. The landscaping has broken tree limbs, abundance of weeds, dying trees. If new promise landscaping is not maintained, it will only look better for a short time. A six-foot fence is not going to eliminate the noise sufficiently. We just won't be able to see who's making the noise. The apartments already cause parking difficulties. We don't know, when you say five family, does that mean there's going to be 10 people trying to live in that house, 15 people trying to live in that house? The amount of noise that those people make are going to drive us insane. That's just all there is to it. It's just too many people in too small a building. And we hope that you consider what it might do to our property values when you allow this to make the traffic worse, the noise worse, and just the people that come in and out to visit the other people. It's not just the people that live there. They can all be very nice, but a lot of their friends and family are not. They can all be very nice, but a lot of their friends and family are not. I woke up this morning, and I couldn't see a place to park for three blocks. I mean, I mean, three sections of our block. It's just, it's ridiculous. They ask, can I park here? And then they stay for seven days. It just, it shouldn't be happening. We're supposed to call all these different departments to have things fixed. Well, just don't add another five to 10 people to our area, please. Please don't do that.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the speaker? Saying none, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Please state your name and your address, please.
My name's RJ Gump. I live at 230 North Volusia. A couple of things. First of all, I, I understand and appreciate the committee's work on volunteer. I understand that, trying to make this place, this city, a better place to live. I also understand you have to depend on staff. You don't have time to go out to all these things and see what's going on. You have to depend on staff. Sometimes staff sees things, sometimes they don't. I suspect many of you have never seen the intersection of Volusia and Douglas and tried to get on it when it's a one-lane street, because parking is taken up on both sides because of the apartments. I understand this issue is just zoning this one lot, but the neighborhood is totally involved. There are 39 apartments in the Bel Air apartment buildings, which do not have any requirement for parking, no requirement at all, because they were grandfathered in, because they were built before, as Ferris said. So, those people have to park someplace. There are, I think, about 27 total slots behind the building, but seven of those are now being used to justify a change of this zoning. So, at least 20 slots for 39 apartments, actually 41, because there's a duplex involved there too. It's not just this particular lot, it's the whole neighborhood. Normally, both sides of the street are filled with cars. You can't safely pull onto Douglas, or you can't safely pull off Douglas. Just a couple of things on the report. I noticed he said on the community communications, he gave one, one letter. I printed off eight letters from different people who live mainly on the 100 block yesterday. That's pretty simple. I don't know why you thought of example of one letter, but that's what you got. Somehow, he was unable to determine the number of apartments, even though I assume he's talked to the, to the owners. Couple, just two more things. Oh, converting the site from one dwelling unit to five units may increase the parking issue. May increase, no, will increase. Verbiage, not may increase, will increase the parking problem. And fourthly, a justification for recommending this is that, oh, it might, denial might represent a loss of use or economic opportunity for the applicant. Are we making zoning decisions on individual financial situations? If we are, we might as well give up zoning and just let anybody do whatever they want. I think.
Your time, your time.
I hope, I hope you deny this. Turn it down. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Saying none, we have a moment for rebuttal. Mr. Ferris? You have two minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the neighborhood's frustration. If they want to make Volusia a one-sided parking only, they can do that. That's all they have to do is petition the city. City will do that, and that takes care of some of that. But that doesn't have anything to do with my case. As long as I provide the adequate parking on this space, staff has already said that people in that apartment complex aren't supposed to be parking there anyway. That needs to be changed anyway, so it would be, based on their comments, they're going to go out and enforce that. So, those apartments wouldn't be allowed to park there anyway without coming back before you do a conditional use and going through that process. So, with that, there really is no findings, other than, and I appreciate neighborhood opposition, there is no findings, other than neighborhood opposition, to oppose this case based on the findings of staff, based on the statements I've made in my report showing that. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for the agent?
And again, if you want to add stipulations of signage, I have absolutely no issue with that. Signage can be restricted only to parking allowed by, by the 117 Volusia residents. I have no problem.
Commissioner Mader.
With you adding that.
This question, I want to ask you, Mr. Ferris, but it might take staff to help with this. Looking at the pictures, that parking for future development is already paved?
Yes, sir.
And it's already being used for parking?
It appears that there is some parking there now, yes.
Okay, so, if that's being used for parking now, but is zoned for single-family, is that parking now not conforming to single-family?
My understanding is it was essentially done under the radar. You know, it was not very brought up to the cities. They weren't necessarily allowed to pave the rear of those lots and use it for parking. There is a remedy for that. They can come in for both properties and do a conditional use for ancillary parking in order to continue to use that for common parking for their other properties along East Douglas.
But that, that hasn't been done. So, at this point, I'm going to make an assumption that all we have there is a non-conforming illegal parking.
That's my understanding.
That would be correct.
Can I assume those people that are parking there today probably live in the apartment complexes?
I would say that's probably a pretty good assumption. I don't have any proof one way or another.
So, then, we're going to add four more apartments, and we're going to tell them they can park here, so the people from the apartment complex who are already using it are going to be told they can't park there. Haven't we just made a bigger problem with parking and traffic?
Sir, they're going to be told they can't park there anyway because it's illegal.
Plus kicking out the handicap.
Excuse me, sir.
But the problem is, it's got nothing to do with this zone case.
Yeah, I guess.
That comes up, that's going to have to be a whole separate conditional use, but it's got no bearing whatsoever on this.
Yeah, they wouldn't be, they would, now the staff is aware of it, they're not going to be able, allowed to be, they're not going to be allowed to park there anyway. So, that parking is now going to go away, no matter whether this case is approved or not.
So, speaking for the applicant, I assume you can assure us that what one of the neighborhood speakers suggested that past behavior is a great indication of future performance. Can we assume that they absolutely will not allow anyone to park there again? I just don't see that happening based on past performance.
It's going to be pretty easy to do that, because there, those parking spaces are going to be required and needed by the people that live in the house, once it's converted to five apartments. So, there won't be any additional parking.
But it's all the same ownership and has been for quite some time.
That is correct.
You know, again, it is two different cases on that. Is there any additional questions for the agent? Saying none, I'll bring him back to the commission.
Question?
Yes, Commissioner.
I've got a question for staff. Are you aware of any complaints from the neighbors around here regarding any noise or illegal activities that some people have referred to here?
None have come to our attention.
Are there any additional, yes, Commissioner Warren?
This is a situation that we run across quite often when we get into the older neighborhoods of Wichita. Back in the days when very possibly, it was one buggy per house, then it became one, one car per house. Now, most, you've got families that have got two and three and four vehicles. So, this is, we've got a huge area in Wichita that is dealing with this. I can't see how we can punish this owner for a change in the way Americans live nowadays. If they can provide the necessary parking on land that they own, then that should meet the requirements that we would be asking for, and as such, I would move, we approve per staff comments and recommendations.
Is there a second? I will second that. Sorry. We have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to state for the record that Commissioner Joe Johnson left.
Thank you. Brings us down to 10. So, we have a motion for approval based on staff recommendation and comments, and a second. Any discussion? Saying none, all supportive of the motion signify and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Can you please raise your hands? We have Commissioner Mader and Miles in opposition. The motion passed eight to two, is that correct? We, next item on the agenda is non-public hearing items. We have none. Is there any other additional business or matters? Yes, Mr. Wado.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to announce that Kelly Dixon, who made a cameo appearance here earlier in the meeting, he is retiring, and so, tomorrow, his celebration is happening tomorrow afternoon. So, you'll see an advertisement for that hanging up in the lobby, so, just want to make sure everyone knew about that.
Okay, if there isn't anything else, entertaining motion for adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
All that still want to hang around here? Motion passes. We are adjourned.